This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Middle School Committee. Today is Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. All members please rise and salute the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, founded by an impenetrable with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Kelly, would you call the roll?
Mr. Franti?
Here.
Mr. Gravellisi?
Here.
Mr. McGuire?
Here.
Ms. Pruitt?
Present.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Here.
Ms. Ty?
Here.
Mayor Rizzo?
Here. Approve the amendments on the January 14th, 2015 meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Is there a motion to suspend rules?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rules are suspended. I'd like to now divert to calendar item number four, approval of the bills for the Hill School as recommended by the building subcommittee. Madam Secretary?
Thank you. Mr. Rizzo? Incumbrances. CTA change order number nine, sixteen thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents. So moved.
Second.
Wait a minute, just one question. Just what is the change order? Do we have any idea?
The building committee will be able to answer that. I'm not sure.
We go on hold for a minute while the superintendent gets appropriate documentation.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take a two-minute recess.
Could we table that motion? We want to know.
Well, is he getting all the documentation or do you just want to move along and?
No, I'm not sure what it is, but I know he's getting documentation.
Okay, well, that's.
Verizon, two hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred twenty-five dollars and twelve cents. Verizon, PACF, poll, move incumbents. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Here's a question on that. CTA construction requisition number twelve for the total amount of one million, four hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars and twenty-six cents. CTA construction base, one million, four hundred five thousand, five hundred eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents. Requisition number twelve for January services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
CTA construction, CO number one, thirty thousand, five hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Requisition number twelve for January services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Right, Mr. Chairman. Is that a change order, Mr. Superintendent, with the second one, CTA construction? It says CO number one.
Yes, that's a change order, change order number one, which was originally voted by this honorable body as an encumbrance. The work was done, so now you're paying the invoice. That particular CO number one was for some brickwork and some tile work that had to be done that we asked for after the fact. So it was some of it related to the foundational work and some of it on tile.
Any questions, ma'am?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
Okay, CTA construction, CO number eight, four hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-four cents. Requisition number twelve, January services. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
DRA, basic services, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred thirteen dollars. Invoice number three zero, January services. So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
DRA, PSS, number thirteen, seven hundred thirty-six dollars and forty-five cents. Invoice number zero two, services through January. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
DRA, PSS, number fourteen, six hundred five dollars. Invoice number zero one for January services. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Go back to the conference.
Okay, let's go back to the change order, the first one, the incumbences. CTA change order number zero nine, a sixteen thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents.
Your mic went out.
Mr. Franti? Mr. Superintendent, could you just give us a quick synopsis of what that's for?
Yes, this is, this change order is made up of a number of small items that were problematic in nature as we were going into the world, omissions from plans. About four thousand dollars is for Tri-Max kicker connections, which are the complicated words for steel being added in the funnel braces. As they were building the building out, they felt the need that things would be working better with more steel in certain places, so the architects and the contractors came to agreement that they would add additional steel. That's about four thousand dollars. About forty-eight hundred dollars is for casework. This was an omission in room eight, third, one thirteen. For some reason, there was no casework called for in the specs for that particular room. It's a classroom. It needed casework.
What's casework?
Casework is in an elementary school, you know how they have like cuppies where the kids put their coats and their boots and has, you know, containers.
Storage.
It's a storage wall. You see them in our new schools, you see a storage wall in all the elementary classrooms. So that, for some strange reason, that was omitted and put back in here. Eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars is for a cabinet unit heater that had to be changed up. One of them was a recessed one that came into the building. One of them was one that stayed flush with the wall. And this is a correction of that so that we don't have it into the building flush with the wall. Fifteen hundred dollars was for changing access panels in ceramic tile areas. Under sinks and in toilet rooms, you see access panels to get to the plumbing. They originally weren't matching to the tile. They weren't as strong a unit. You could tell there was a panel there to put them in disguise if they're made out of the tile. It makes a whole better appearance. That wasn't in the original spec. We found there was a better thing to do so that it doesn't highlight those areas to any rascals and at the same time makes them more secure. The next piece was seven hundred dollars. We wanted to add a bottle filling station. So another water bubbler is, kids go to a water bubbler. More and more kids are taking their own water container. So we made and we're experimenting with this. Actually, we just installed one a week ago at the high school for kids to be able to fill up their, their own water bottle with water at a filling station. So it's the kind of thing that is a bubbler and has a spot that you can fill the bottle on. So we put one in the, we wanted to put one in the new Hill School outside of the gym area and see how it works with elementary kids. And that was a piece of this, that's seven hundred dollars of it. And the last component is thirty-eight hundred dollars. There's a break metal closure on the skylight. After they put the skylight in, our folks on project management were concerned that the way it fell, the way it met up with the roof, they were concerned not for leakage, but for general appearance and for the fact that it could catch stuff. So this is a metal closure on the skylight that would imagine, imagine a ninety-degree spot where snow or weather could build up. And this metal closure would add sort of a slope to it so stuff could blow off or move off of those window areas, skylight areas, without getting trapped and blocked in what would be a ninety-degree turn. All of these, you know, we were discussing at the building meetings regularly and they came to our meeting this morning and the subcommittee on payment of bills recommends all of them. They, in fact, there's one, two, three, four, five, there's six of them, total of sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars. All still well within that contingency fund that we have put aside for these unknown circumstances to crop up, as we've seen in all of our other buildings, that crop up and we end up needing. So I don't see any of this as out of the ordinary. If anything, I see some of it as preventing problems in the future.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
Okay, on, on the change order, roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we go back to the regular order of business.
There's a motion to go back to regular order of business. All in favor, all opposed? So would it? Calendar item number three, superintendent's report. Dr. Dig.
On the first part of the superintendent report, Dr. Kelly should bring us up to date on the middle school process for determining school selections and visits. Dr. Kelly?
Not, a lot has changed since we met in January, but we have finalized the schedule of school visits. All parents should have already received the permission slips. They went home last week. We have arranged times for each elementary school's fifth grade to tour. Each of the three middle schools with their teachers and with their classmates. The letters that parents sent home invited parents to join their children on the tours if they so desire. We're not providing transportation for the parents because we just don't have that kind of capacity, but they do have specific schedules of what time their child will be at each of the three middle schools and they can provide their own transportation and meet the kids at each school at that time and join them on the tour. And the middle schools are ready and excited to accept both the parents and the children and show them a little bit about what their schools are all about. So those, those tours are scheduled for four days the week after vacation. They are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. We actually have a scheduling conflict we had to work with on Wednesday, which is why we're not touring on that day. But everybody is scheduled to tour, including our, our students with unique needs who are moving on to special district-wide programs that take place at the Remy Marsh and the Susan B. Anthony. And because those are specific assignments, those kids, together with their teachers and again their parents, will be touring whatever program the student will actually be assigned to next year rather than to all of the schools. We don't want to waste the student's time or the teacher's time. We want to make sure that everybody's seeing what's relevant to them. So those tours will take place next week with the parents. I know all the permission slips went home already. If your child didn't share that with you, please look in their backpack. The tours will take place the week after vacation. We're also working on getting our middle school selection form completed. We hope to have those out actually on Thursday. I know there's the threat of more inclement weather Thursday night into Friday, so we're hoping to have those out Thursday with a due back date of March 6th. So in fact, parents will have the application form in hand for three weeks before it's due back, next week being vacation week, the second week being the week their kids will tour all of the different buildings, and then another week to deliberate if they so choose before they do back to their elementary schools.
Okay, any questions, Bob, on that process? Okay, well, you mentioned weather and as everybody knows, with the channel, we're just going for the last three weeks or so. And so far this year, we're already, we're already up to nine days, but we've had calls to bring it up to about June 25th. That's deep into June. And I'm not confident that we're out of the bad weather yet. I think, you know, they're talking about this Thursday potentially only being three inches, but three inches or four inches with the wrong day can add complications to what's already on the ground. And they're talking about another storm, weather cycle of what's happening. Something on Sunday night. So I'm not confident that the number ends at nine. And, you know, I think I've been around long enough to know that there are some things that just don't appeal out of the, very quickly to being potential remedies for this kind of situation. Making days up is something that the commissioner is hired and fast on, so they look to have you make up days. A few things that they always frown upon, and that's folks that start after Labor Day and then are looking for forgiveness at the end of the year. The TSE's position is, hey, you should be starting before Labor Day anyway. We do start before Labor Day. Other conditions that in especially Suffolk County, that Boston is going to be going the two holidays in the spring, Buckingham Day and.
And the.
We already go to school in those two days, so we're not losing those. Other than our religious holy days, we've had a real tight schedule. There is a provision in the happen discussions that the commissioner has the ability to grant waivers. And I am recommending that we consider, in this party, consider allowing me to submit a waiver. A waiver would require agreement of the school committee and agreements of the teacher union. In order to apply. Without agreement of both, we can't apply for a waiver. And that would just mean we have to look at, how do we get the days? Well, one option would be just go to the 25th or the 26th or the 29th, depending if there are more days. And I mean, it's a closed deal. You do that. I don't think that's the best thing for kids going that deep into the summer. I don't think it's best for families. I especially would like that time to happen in the middle of the year where it can help kids on SAT exams, AP exams, and those kinds of things that mean something for a kid's future. So I think at the end of the year, and I think we all can conclude that, going deep into June, is time that just isn't as academically sound as having meat, academic meat in the, in the middle of the school year. We could talk about April vacation. And, I mean, that's a difficult, that's a difficult thing to bite off because there are a number of families and a number of staff members that already have plans and traveling. So that's a tough thing to do at this time of the year. It's controversial. And another thing would be Saturdays. And it may not be as controversial as April vacation, but still people have a hard time picking Saturdays. The fact is that the days have to be made up unless we come up with a logical waiver that we could make appeal to the commissioner with that would tempt them to consent. And our idea is that since we especially started before Labor Day and have a good case there and that we have already beaten down those two holy, holidays in the spread, we're already going, there's not much else for us. So I would like to draw up a waiver that says, we will go to the 185th day that our calendar called for. That would mean that we're making up five snow days by going regular days. Now, our calendar called us to be out on the 12th. So with the five days made up, it puts us out on the 19th, which is a reasonable day. That's a Friday. Although that only means we've made up five days, we would have four other days to make up. And my appeal would be that each school's a little different than the number of hours they have, but that the schools, that we get a waiver that allows the schools to make up an hour a day for the number of hours they owe for those days that we haven't made up at the end of the year. In other words, we owe nine now. If it stays at nine, the case would be we work five of those days and we get out on the 19th, and then that means there's four days left that we owe. If you're a school like an elementary school, typical day is six hours. Four days, six hours, that's 24 hours of learning time. And what we do with that 24 hours, for 24 days, we add an hour to each day for 24 days at a time that gets us prime academic time before SATs, before AP exams. It probably, it may be able to be before some of the state testing and MCAS and, and PARC, but that doesn't bother me as much as the critical tests for kids that are going into college that mean money, mean scholarships. I want our kids to have enough faculty for that matter to have all the academic time they can for those tests. So, you know, in, in this scenario, an elementary school like the Lincoln School would owe 24 hours, so the district would designate those days and maybe they start on March 9th if we could get the appeal done and agreed to by the school committee and the union, get it into the commissioner. March 9th is after. The.
Daylight savings.
Daylight savings time. I knew you'd be there, Mr. [inaudible]. That's why you're the able assistant down there. Daylight savings time is on the 8th, so we're going to get a little more length. Kids are going to be in school an hour longer, so it's going to be brighter longer, so that's lending to our favor. And then we would go 24 school days in a row and get prime academic time during a time when it is more valuable to us than the end of June. Now, there are other schools that go a different amount of time. For example, the high school is a 6.5-hour day, so for four days, they end the whole in 26 hours, so they'd have to do 26 such days. And all the way down, and like the Wayland School, the Wayland School does an eight-hour day. So they'd have eight, four eight-hour days to make up, so they owe 32 hours, and that would make a long day for expanded learning time. But in talking with the commissioner and being at meetings with him on this issue, there's no exception for expanded learning time in any of this. All the days have to be met, and if the days aren't met, he'll entertain waivers for other creative ideas. The creative idea I can come up with is that we add hours. Now, maybe we bifurcate. If, if schools don't want to be part of this waiver, they could stay in session until the 26th, or the 25th, or the 29th, if there's more snow days, and just bang out those days at the end of the year. I don't think it's much best for kids. I don't think it's best, much best academically, but it could be the possibility where that's the case. And I, I think, I think this is the most, in talking to teachers and even talking to union officials, I think the initial feelings I got from people in discussing this waiver by eating up five days at the end of the year and then doing the rest in the term of hours is more appealing than doing April vacation days or Saturdays. If people would prefer to do April vacation or Saturday, I really have no vested interest in that and stopping that. As long as the Saturdays are before testing time and the April vacation would actually help some of the testing, not all of it, it would certainly help the SATs and the advanced placement, so that wouldn't bother me. But I think that's, that's really difficult on people. So this is an idea if the committee could embrace, you know, I'd, I'd like to have some kind of motion that somebody could put together that would allow us this flexibility. Now, it may be for naught, because the commission might say, don't want this, not good, no good. And it might be for naught, your vote here, because the union might say, no, not good. But if we want to get a ball rolling here, it would, you know, I think it would be good to support this idea about applying for a waiver to the Department of Education. There's no guarantees at all. Hopefully, it's a creative enough idea that would allow us that. I mean, I have lots of good reasons that I can articulate to the commissioner about this. We have professional development plan for the last two weeks of June that's already scheduled with high-end providers that are scheduled out that we may not be able to have if we don't do it at that point. It's good for testing, it's good for kids, it gets kids out of buildings, especially without air conditioners, before the end of June. I think it's a better plan and would hope that the committee would support at least the ability to present it to the union and to the commissioner. Your vote would absolutely do that. If the union doesn't agree, then it doesn't even go anywhere anyway. But I think it's probably a good step that we can take now to help things out.
I'd like to make a motion. Would you like to make a motion?
Ms. Gravellisi?
I move that to make up the lost time during the snow days, that we support the waiver that our superintendent will develop, which will appeal to DESA, to extend the length of the school days instead of increasing the number of school days.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Present.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes. Quick question on that. Mr. McGuire, you have a question?
Yes, to the superintendent, Paul, just like a school day, is that up to the, you just extend every class 15 minutes, 10 minutes, five minutes, or how does that work?
Well, an hour day, I think it comes down differently in each building. I think at, for example, the high school, they would probably have a four-period day, so they probably, I would speculate, we would be looking to increase each class probably a lot of time. So if a middle school has a six-period day, divides six into 60, they're going to get 10 more minutes each period. Elementary school's a little different, flexibility, how they gauge and use that time. They might extend their reading literacy block, they might be doing other things with it, but we let it happen. But I think in the middle and high school, that, you know, in working the intricacies of this together, I'm probably working with the principal to add it, add the time to every period.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Franti? Paul, you said that some of the schools might go for and some don't. What happens if you have a decision like, like three go and three don't? How do we work that out?
Well, I, I think it's the union that's going to have to bring their people on board here. We're going to, you know, if the union comes on board and they feel it's good for all of the regular scheduled schools and not the ELT schools, then I would take that and present it to the commissioner as such and see what he decides. So we may have some schools going off for a longer year and others up to the 19th and adding on time.
So that wouldn't be a problem to your mind?
No, I don't see it as a problem, you know, it becomes, you know, it really ends up in the hands. I'm just trying to think creatively of a way to get us out earlier because I've heard from so many parents, I've heard from a number of teachers, and I know the angst about going so long. I know the angst about taking away April vacation. I can understand that, and I can understand the Saturday thing. So in thinking creatively, we're trying to sort of appeal to the commissioner saying, look, if you make us do 185-day schedule, we'll do that for you. We'll, we'll use our built-in five-snow days and let us make the others up creatively so that we can do what's best for kids and test them.
Thank you.
Ms. Van? We have, we have a parent in, a parent in the audience, and if you'd like to say something, I think it would be appropriate.
I'm a parent of a first grade student at the Wayland who lived at ELT, which is an elementary school teacher there. I'm here today as a parent. My concern with the additional hour, right now my daughter has an eight-hour school day, which is a choice of both my husband and I will enroll her at the Wayland. My concern with adding another hour, we're asking children who are between the ages of five and 11 to do a nine-hour school day, even though it's only for a month. We're a very structured rigor school, so what would that hour entail? Would they have a longer lunch period? Would they be more creative? Would there be more creative opportunities for them, or would it be strictly academics?
Well, I know that when we put this in, the commissioner's gonna look closely as to how the time is used. If he saw that, for example, it was gonna be recess for all of those, and he'd put in his mind, I'm adding...
We don't have recess. I'll just stop here and say that we don't have recess.
Four days of recess. I'm giving you an exaggerated statement. They wanna see, I forget his exact word, but it was something like quality, high-quality academic time. So, I think in fairness, we would look proportionately at the learning day, the hard learning day, and then at those other times, for example, lunch, and proportion the hours out such that the academic time was getting its fair share of the proportion and lunch was getting its fair share. So, does that mean lunch might increase by a few minutes? Yes, I do think so. But remember, I know, they will count minutes, and they will count academic minutes when they look at this. And I know that they won't approve a plan if they feel they are losing high-quality academic time. And I'm gonna be writing this up as, "Look, we're trying to make high-quality academic time. It's not high-quality academic time." And I can understand the point about an hour more in ELT school, which is why, you know, I think maybe, and this will be up to the teachers and unions to decide, whether we wanna, you know, put in a plan that says, "Hey, the ELT's gonna do the regular thing, and they're gonna go until 25th, 26th, 29th, whatever it ends up." And the other schools are gonna add an hour. But at least we get something out of it for some people. So, to answer your question, we're gonna have to splice this out and show the commissioner that, yeah, the academics in those four lost days was X amount of hours, and the sort of lunchtime and other times like that were Y amount of hours. And here, we'll put them proportionately back into this longer day, an hour longer, in those proportions. So, it's just as strong academically as it would have been.
Okay. Two more questions. And the second question is, if you were to say this does not work out, it's not voted, if the commissioner doesn't agree, the teacher union doesn't agree, you had said April vacation was something else. Is that an all or nothing? So, that means every single teacher and every single student would be required to go to school on April vacation? People that had planned vacations, how would that work?
I think that we wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend through the committee or anyone that we went down an April-vacation route unless the teachers and parents wanted to go down that route. So, if it came to that and this was crushed, I would develop a survey that would go out to parents and say, "Look, we tried what we thought was the easiest way for us to address this issue. It didn't work out with the state. So, here's the survey, and please take it. What would you prefer to do? Go to school on some Saturdays? Go to school during some days in April vacation? Maybe not all of them, maybe just a couple of them, two or three of them? Or forget that and just extend it all the way till June 29th, June 26th, whatever it ends up." And I would, at that point, I would want to get for the committee some survey data from parents and teachers that the committee could then look at. I think the, and I'm doing this proposal quickly and jumping on it, because the root of it is timely. I don't know how long the commissioner would take to grant this waiver. I don't know how, I wanna get it in the union's hands. They've been having trouble getting it together because of the weather themselves. And I know the commission's been in any time and the union's been in any time. And you know what? I'm selfish. I want the time in March and April so that it's doing exactly what is best for kids. And that's giving them academic, good academic quality time before they have to display their talents in the high work of teachers on an AP test or a college board test. And like I said, I'm not as concerned with PARC and MCAS as I am with those bigger tests that determine kids' future much more than a PARC test does to a fourth grader or an MCAS does to a fifth grader.
Just one more question. I know there is some professional development embedded in the schedule for the remainder of the year. The Wayland has five upcoming 130 dismissals for teaching professional development. Is it possible that those days could be put back as...
Yeah, I think if we're, we would have to do the numerics here, because if, let's say that the quality academic time that your ELT school would be using is our original calculation at Wayland's 32 hours, we gotta get that 32 hours in for the schedule somehow in proportion to the, like the lunchtime we talked about.
That would be 10 hours right there, so that would be a day.
Well, it would probably mean, this is contact time with kids. It probably means your 130 dismissal moves to a 230 for the kids, and you end up staying in PD from 2:30, whatever that clock went.
So, Melissa, the other issue with that is that that professional development has been written into your ELT agreement, which has been ratified by this committee and approved by the state. So, a change such as you're suggesting would also need state approval. It would be the same different kind of waiver that we'd be looking for from the state. And I know that Dr. Dagan mentioned, the commissioner has indicated he's not amenable to changing rules for ELT schools.
So, I think it would just shift the PD start from 1:30 to 2:30 and go an hour longer.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Dr. Dagan, was that, so that was, is that the conclusion of your subcommittee report?
Yes, it does. And we got a motion that I think gives me some flexibility to approach the union, and then if the union agrees to approach the commissioner.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Dagan. We're gonna move on to calendar item number five, which is...
Oh, I had one, I had one, I think I would have one other thing. This weather, this whole weather thing is problematic. This has been, this is my 14th year calling school off, and without a doubt, this has been the strangest year. And I just wanna say, it's gonna be a pleasure not to have to do this next year. And as you folks know, and I think the general public knows, that this is sort of my last winter at the helm here, and whoever takes over after me will have to deal with this next year. Now, you know something? It's something I don't mind giving up, because these are nights where if I can get it called the night before, I sleep somewhat, but if I can't get it called the night before, it is torture. And it's torture anyway, just trying to decide whether you're gonna put kids out. Like tomorrow's not a good day. Tonight is not a sleep night. Tomorrow's not a good day, because we are having school. And in the next month, it's not gonna be a good day, because there's no way we can keep kids home, and there's no way those snow piles are gonna disappear over the next month. Our sidewalks before a few of snow are gonna get shoveled over the next four months. So, we're gonna be in difficult situations, but if everybody pitches in, if people in our community goes slowly and the like, things will be good. But you know what? I welcome someone else taking this over next year.
Well, Dr. Dagan, we will certainly miss you next year, but I know that time march is on, and I feel like we're going to be in very capable hearings. And with that said, I think we should move on to calendar number five, subcommittee reports. Do we have any, any subcommittee reports that we need to discuss?
We do, and that is on topic. I'll make the motion first. Pursuant to the impending retirement of Superintendent Dagan, and in accordance with the longstanding tradition in the Revere Public Schools to ensure continuity and smooth transitions, that the Revere School Committee make known its interest in having Dr. Diane Kelly serve as the next superintendent of schools. And further, that the school committee immediately enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Kelly.
Second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Ms. Grabelisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
If I may just say, Mr. Mayor, if I may just say a couple of things.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ty.
Thank you. We have an embarrassment of riches in the Revere Public Schools. We have, you know, we have sitting at this desk with us three extraordinarily talented and devoted individuals. And there will be time to talk about each one of the three of them in the future, about their contributions that have been done. But I think right now, this is simply a housekeeping issue, and that we need to move forward with negotiating a contract, a possible contract with Dr. Kelly, which I hope will be successful. I think, I have no doubt that everybody here will be very happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. And I agree with everything you said, with the exception of one, and that is, I think we have more than just three talented and devoted individuals.
I mean, the people who get paid.
Oh, people that get paid, that's what you said. But, so, well, you know, I for one couldn't be happier with that vote. I think it's important, as much as some may say that it's still early and that Dr. Dagan still has a lot of time, but there really is a lot involved as we go forward in this process. And so, I wanna thank you, Ms. Ty, for putting that motion forward, and thank members of the committee.
That's, of course, on behalf, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
That's, of course, on behalf of the committee of the whole.
Yes, absolutely.
And it should be noted that way. I'm sorry, I should've said that in the beginning.
Thank you, members of the committee. Would anyone else like to comment or wanting to calendar number six?
We still have another subcommittee report.
Oh, I'm sorry. We still have this, well, we have another subcommittee report. Ms. Rizzo?
Thank you, sir. Back, way back when, in November 17th, 2014, the policy committee, subcommittee met regarding the Revere Public Schools and our partnership with the banks, the credit unions, and other financial entities. And we are recommending to accept this policy as is. We've been fortunate enough that our schools get to work with TD Bay, St. Jean's Credit, and it's a great policy. So, we're recommending that you accept it.
Second motion?
On Ms. Rizzo's subcommittee report, to accept the report and the policy therein. We have a second roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Grabelisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
If I may just say...
Five months.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just say a couple of things.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ty.
Thank you. We have an embarrassment of riches in the Revere Public Schools. We have, you know, we have sitting at this desk with us three extraordinarily talented and devoted individuals. And there will be time to talk about each one of the three of them in the future, about their contributions that have been done. But I think right now, this is simply a housekeeping issue, and that we need to move forward with negotiating a contract, a possible contract with Dr. Kelly, which I hope will be successful. I think, I have no doubt that everybody here will be very happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. And I agree with everything you said, with the exception of one, and that is, I think we have more than just three talented and devoted individuals.
I mean, the people who get paid.
Oh, people that get paid, that's what you said. But, so, well, you know, I for one couldn't be happier with that vote. I think it's important, as much as some may say that it's still early and that Dr. Dagan still has a lot of time, but there really is a lot involved as we go forward in this process. And so, I wanna thank you, Ms. Ty, for putting that motion forward, and thank members of the committee.
That's, of course, on behalf, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
That's, of course, on behalf of the committee of the whole.
Yes, absolutely.
And it should be noted that way. I'm sorry, I should've said that in the beginning.
Thank you, members of the committee. Would anyone else like to comment or wanting to calendar number six?
We still have another subcommittee report.
Oh, I'm sorry. We still have this, well, we have another subcommittee report. Ms. Rizzo?
Thank you, sir. Back, way back when, in November 17th, 2014, the policy committee, subcommittee met regarding the Revere Public Schools and our partnership with the banks, the credit unions, and other financial entities. And we are recommending to accept this policy as is. We've been fortunate enough that our schools get to work with TD Bay, St. Jean's Credit, and it's a great policy. So, we're recommending that you accept it.
Second motion?
On Ms. Rizzo's subcommittee report, to accept the report and the policy therein. We have a second roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Grabelisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
If I may just say...
Five months.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just say a couple of things.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ty.
Thank you. We have an embarrassment of riches in the Revere Public Schools. We have, you know, we have sitting at this desk with us three extraordinarily talented and devoted individuals. And there will be time to talk about each one of the three of them in the future, about their contributions that have been done. But I think right now, this is simply a housekeeping issue, and that we need to move forward with negotiating a contract, a possible contract with Dr. Kelly, which I hope will be successful. I think, I have no doubt that everybody here will be very happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. And I agree with everything you said, with the exception of one, and that is, I think we have more than just three talented and devoted individuals.
I mean, the people who get paid.
Oh, people that get paid, that's what you said. But, so, well, you know, I for one couldn't be happier with that vote. I think it's important, as much as some may say that it's still early and that Dr. Dagan still has a lot of time, but there really is a lot involved as we go forward in this process. And so, I wanna thank you, Ms. Ty, for putting that motion forward, and thank members of the committee.
That's, of course, on behalf, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
That's, of course, on behalf of the committee of the whole.
Yes, absolutely.
And it should be noted that way. I'm sorry, I should've said that in the beginning.
Thank you, members of the committee. Would anyone else like to comment or wanting to calendar number six?
We still have another subcommittee report.
Oh, I'm sorry. We still have this, well, we have another subcommittee report. Ms. Rizzo?
Thank you, sir. Back, way back when, in November 17th, 2014, the policy committee, subcommittee met regarding the Revere Public Schools and our partnership with the banks, the credit unions, and other financial entities. And we are recommending to accept this policy as is. We've been fortunate enough that our schools get to work with TD Bay, St. Jean's Credit, and it's a great policy. So, we're recommending that you accept it.
Second motion?
On Ms. Rizzo's subcommittee report, to accept the report and the policy therein. We have a second roll call, please.
Mr. Franti?
Yes.
Ms. Grabelisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Ms. Pruitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Rizzo?
Yes.
If I may just say...
Five months.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just say a couple of things.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ty.
Thank you. We have an embarrassment of riches in the Revere Public Schools. We have, you know, we have sitting at this desk with us three extraordinarily talented and devoted individuals. And there will be time to talk about each one of the three of them in the future, about their contributions that have been done. But I think right now, this is simply a housekeeping issue, and that we need to move forward with negotiating a contract, a possible contract with Dr. Kelly, which I hope will be successful. I think, I have no doubt that everybody here will be very happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. And I agree with everything you said, with the exception of one, and that is, I think we have more than just three talented and devoted individuals.
I mean, the people who get paid.
Oh, people that get paid, that's what you said. But, so, well, you know, I for one couldn't be happier with that vote. I think it's important, as much as some may say that it's still early and that Dr. Dagan still has a lot of time, but there really is a lot involved as we go forward in this process. And so, I wanna thank you, Ms. Ty, for putting that motion forward, and thank members of the committee.
That's, of course, on behalf, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
That's, of course, on behalf of the committee of the whole.
I've received a lot of terrific ideas from people since the inception of all this snow, on how we should better handle it going forward. And all of those ideas are being registered, and we'll be talking about the short. So I think it's worth noting, and we all may have seen, our Snow Angels are going to be on Fox 25 tonight at 5:15, and I think again at 5:45. That's our ROTC group that has, you know, I stopped and talked to a group this morning that was out there shoveling snow, and they're just, it is such a tremendous program, and I'm really glad that Fox has, you know, has recognized the hard work. In fact, I probably shouldn't say this, because we've got a waiting list of people-
I know it.
-that want to get the Snow Angels, and they can only do so much. We've expanded it out, by the way. Anybody, kids, adults that want to get involved in helping out, they can certainly call the mayor's office. We're accumulating a list of people that want to help out with people, with, you know, with seniors and disabled, people that just can't get out and shovel for themselves. Right now, it's only our ROTC, and they have, not only are they shoveling out people, I just want to share a couple of quick stories if I could, they'll be very quick. One is, there's a particular home that's on the Snow Angel list that they have been shoveling out. It's an elderly woman, and, you know, her husband actually passed away not too long ago, maybe about six months ago. And they have been to her house so many times, and normally she'll open the door and offer them a drink or whatever, cold drink, and they recognize that she wasn't there, the car was there, but she didn't come to the door. They reported that to Major Baucher, who informed my office that the kids were concerned because they didn't see her. And we in turn had the police and fire go do a well-being check on her. Turns out she was okay and just staying with a family member. But this is how we learned that these kids are, to actually pick up on the fact that she was not there and they were used to seeing her there. Now, these particular storms have been so impactful that they raised the bar to a level three, and it's beyond me as to how they go to the different levels. But at level three, they recognize that a lot of these seniors are disabled, can't get out and maybe get the, you know, the bare essentials, milk, bread, whatever, you know. They offer the home, they offer the person who lives there to go to the store for them and bring back groceries.
Wow.
It's absolutely, I mean, it's just absolutely incredible. It's a, it's a model that, you know, I know, I know that we're all proud of, and these kids are just really, really terrific. And I'd love to see it expand because the list of people who want to take advantage of this tremendous service that our young people are providing is just growing by the storm. So if there is anybody out there that's interested in helping out, you know, you definitely get community service hours for helping. And, you know, again, if there's just people out there in general, we've had some adults, you know, not just kids, we've had adults, you know, call up and say, listen, I'd be happy to help, maybe do one or two homes or something like that. So if you are interested, simply call the mayor's office. But thank you, Mr. McGuire, for that motion. Anybody else, Kim? Mrs. Rizzo?
I just want to add, and I'm sure a lot of our students are helping in one way or the other, we had many of our Seacoast students the past week or two helping out with hydrants and troubling neighbors. So we have great kids who are in that system, we're blessed.
Yeah, and I'd just like to say, because sometimes, you know, when the world isn't perfect, people find it hard to accept that it's not perfect, and that we're only human beings trying to do the best that we can. And sometimes you hear some of the negative comments, but I was talking to a group today, and they were, I mean, everybody was talking about how hard everyone was trying to help, and there was so much, and a lot of appreciation for you, Mr. Mayor, for the city workers. I mean, we see the same people out there, we see, I passed by today, and there were the firefighters digging into a hybrid that was way away from the street, up on top of it and trying to do that. As you came along the street, we saw that you were having, you know, the section by the library and by the churches down there done, and I know that you're doing my own end of note because we can't, we can't move it off. So I think everybody in the city who has worked so hard over time, and they must be exhausted, and I'm sure it's a sacrifice to the realm family, just, I think we appreciate that, and especially for everything you're trying to do for the school. So thanks to all of you folks out there who have helped. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Ty, for recognizing their hard work because we've got some, we've got, I've said it 100 times, but we've done some tremendous, you know, some tremendous public service at, you know, on virtually every level, our public works department, our police department that's been out there, operating in very difficult conditions. You know, our fighting department clearly still has to respond to medical emergencies, and unfortunately, they had to battle that terrible fire up on Reservoir Ave last Friday in really, really tough conditions, when you think, when you factor in the snow, the fact that it's a densely populated neighborhood on a hill that is arguably one of the steepest hills in the city. And, you know, to be able to contain that fire the way they did was really a credit to their professionalism and, you know, certainly their work ethic, the way they do things. And then, you know, they pack it all in, they take care of the fire, and then they're back out shoveling out hydrants. So really, you know, it's, sometimes it's easy to criticize, and you can't blame people for getting, you know, we deal, we've been dealing with angry residents, you know, that I think are just upset and they want to vent, I think, in a lot of ways. You know, but these people are out there doing their best that they can. Some of them are out there 36 hours without any sleep, and, you know, it's the hand that we've been done, so, but, you know, I think by and large, people have been understanding and, you know, they've been really, you know, they've been, you know, they've been patient to the extent they can, and, you know, pretty soon it'll be springtime, and hopefully this will be a discipline day. So we'll continue to do the best job that we can.
Thank you.
So anybody else have any comments? Okay, we'll move on to link communications. It doesn't look like there's any. Motions, we already have had a couple. Any further motions?
Yes. Yes, we do have a motion.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Stacy Rizzo made the following motion. She requests that the Superintendent to work with the proper realm committee into pursuing the use of virtual or blizzard bags for snowy days, and to update the Revere School Committee with their findings. We like pilot programs and can learn to make good elements of our school system even better.
Second?
Thank you. Ms. Rizzo?
May?
I mean, I'm sure after two weeks of being in the House listening to the news and reading the paper, we all have an idea what blizzard bags are. And after talking to some of the educators over at Paul Revere, they have gotten their blizzard bags together. Unfortunately, they weren't sent home because they didn't realize right away they would be getting this first blizzard. But they did send it home the last time we were in school. I don't even remember anymore. And I just think it's a great pilot program. I'm glad Paul Revere is taking the initiative to do it, but we are one city, and I'd like to see it throughout the city, and be consistent for all our students, all our educators, all our parents. And I realize when the pilot is done, you need at least, I believe, I might be wrong with telling you, you need at least 85% participation of, go ahead, help me out.
You mean for it to count?
For it to count.
Yeah, so right now, Massachusetts does not have a provision on the books that allows it to count at all. Other districts, other states do have provisions, like you're talking about, New Hampshire has one, I know there are several other states out in the Northwest that have such provisions. And typically is around 85% to 90% response rate from students in order for it to count for anybody. So if it ends up being one of those things where, you know, only half of the kids complete the task, then unfortunately, it doesn't count for any of the kids, and they're not able to apply that time to, as a school day, so.
So by the bout now, I think if they want to weigh April vacations, March vacations, blizzard bags, go to school till July 4th, I just think it would be good to research it, and hopefully it will work out. Thank you.
On Mrs. Rizzo's motion, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Calendar item number 10, public comments. I don't see anybody here wishing to provide public comments, so we'll move to calendar number 11, payment of bills. Is there a motion to pay the bills? Okay.
Okay, to honorable school committee, from Matt Cruz, school business administrator, we have payment of bills. Authorization is hereby requested to pay all vendor invoices on hand. Each purchase was authorized by a purchase leader and is subject to further review by the city auditor. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Calendar item, oh, I'm sorry, before we have a motion to adjourn, or we accept a motion to adjourn, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Revere School Committee will be March 10th at 6:00 P.M. Is there a motion to adjourn? Who made the motion?
The mayor, Michael, so.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, a second? All in favor? So moved. This motion is adjourned to March 10th. We've got a good note. The snowstorm is taking effect.